The date is September 23rd, 2025. The time is 1800 hours. And I would like to call the Frederick County School Board meeting to order. We have an agenda before us. Do I have a motion for approval?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Madam Vice Chair, what is the pleasure of the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the county school board of Frederick County, Virginia, enter a closed session meeting for the following. One, to discuss, review and discuss appointments, administrative appointments, administrative leave, declined offers, dismissals, resignations, support staff hires, substitutes, tutors, and volunteers pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, Paragraph A dot one and two. To review and discuss individual student matters that would involve specific students and particular information contained in their scholastic records, including requests for release from compulsory attendance for religious reasons pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, Paragraph A dot two.
We have a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in closed session and we will reconvene at 1900 hours.
Mr. Chair, I move that we reconvene from closed session.
Second.
We have a motion to return from closed session. It's been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, I move that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in the closed session, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board.
Second.
We have a motion to certify the closed session, and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Caruso?
Here.
Ms. Rebell?
Yep.
Ms. Sturdivant?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Dr. Erskine?
Aye.
Mr. Adkins?
Aye.
All right. Just for my own kicks and giggles, can you folks hear us out there? I was just curious. I couldn't hear them at the Board of Supervisors meeting the other night. All right, then.
And, Mr. Chair, I move that the board recess its meeting until 7:00 PM.
Second.
Been motioned to recess until 1900 hours and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we recessed. I'm going to ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence, please.
Actually, we need to reconvene for recess.
Reconvene? I thought we already did that.
And, Mr. Chair.
I'm trying to... I told you, I don't read directions.
And, Mr. Chair, I move that the board reconvene its meeting.
Second.
We have a motion which has been vigorously seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now.
Actually, and, Mr. Chair, we have two motions out of closed session. The first motion, I move the board approve the personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Motion has been made, properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And, Mr. Chair, I move that the board approve the release of student A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and J from compulsory attendance.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I didn't read that page.
And that completes the motions out of closed session, Mr. Chair.
Now, please join me in a moment of silence. And I personally would like to dedicate this moment of silence to Charlie Kirk. Thank you for joining me in that moment of silence. And tonight, we're going to be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Bennett Wise from Millbrook High School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much for doing that, sir. All right. Next is the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Consent Agenda before us.
Second.
We have a motion to approve. It has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Up next is our Student and Staff Recognitions, and I'm going to pass that off to our fantastic superintendent.
If I may, Mr. Chair, can we read the proclamations that we had?
Mr. Chair, it looks like we have three proclamations. We have Bullying Prevention Month, followed by National School Lunch Week, followed by National Bus Safety Week. And I believe the Bullying Prevention Month was that?
That's me.
Yep? Okay.
Proclamation, Virginia School Board Association Bullying Prevention Month, October 2025. Whereas school bullying is an issue which requires continued focus and prevention efforts and whereas bullying can take many forms and can happen in many places on and off school grounds, and whereas it's important for parents, students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of bullying and to encourage discussion of the problem as a school community and whereas Frederick County Public Schools has a character education program which promotes the core character traits of respect, integrity, citizenship, honesty, empathy, caring, and responsibility, and whereas Frederick County Public Schools adopted a human rights policy in 1993 which recognizes the importance of each student being able to come to school and enjoy freedom from intimidation or discrimination by threat, force, violence, or harassment, and whereas Frederick County Public Schools has an established bullying prevention program which encourages students to discuss bullying and report any incidents of bullying to adults, and whereas students and members of the community are becoming more engaged in activities to combat and raise awareness about the issue of bullying. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Frederick County School Board hereby declares October 2025 as Virginia School Board Association Bullying Prevention Month with the intention that the issue of bullying and its prevention continue to be discussed in Frederick County Public Schools and in our community dated this 23rd day of September 2025.
Mr. Chair, proclamation, National School Lunch Week, October 13 through 17, 2025. Whereas the National School Lunch Program has served our nation admirably since 1946 through advanced practices in nutrition education, and whereas the National School Lunch Program is dedicated to the health and well-being of our nation's children, and whereas the National School Lunch Program has been joined through the years by many other excellent child feeding programs, and there is evidence of continued need for nutrition education and awareness of the value of school nutrition programs. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Frederick County School Board hereby declares the week of October 13 through 17, 2025 as National School Lunch Week, and encourages all residents to become aware of and concerned about their children's and their own nutrition habits in hope of achieving a healthier citizenry today and in the future, dated this 23rd day of September 2025.
Mr. Chairman, proclamation of the National School Bus Safety Week. Whereas National School Bus Safety Week is an active continuing public education program designed to promote school bus safety and whereas the safety of school-aged children is important to parents, family members, teachers, school staff, and citizens, and whereas it is estimated that each week 350,000 cars nationwide ignored the flashing red lights on school buses and passed buses during loading and unloading procedures, and whereas motorists can assist in keeping students safe by complying with traffic signals, observing traffic patterns, and by stopping when school buses are loading and unloading students, and whereas National School Bus Safety Week recognizes the hard work and dedication of school transportation personnel, especially the many school bus drivers who ensure a safe journey to and from school for students each day, and whereas the Frederick County Public Schools Transportation Department strives to provide safe, reliable transportation to students and completes in excess of 750 runs covering roughly 12,000 miles per day and more than 2.4 million miles each year. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Frederick County School Board hereby recognizes the week of October 20 through 24 of the year 2025 as National School Bus Safety Week and encourages all residents to become aware and concerned about the safety of children as they are being transported to and from school, dated this 23rd day of September the year 2025.
You can.
Thank you, sir.
Now, I will pass it off to our fantastic superintendent, Dr. Hammer.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Now for our Awards of Excellence program. I want to thank everybody for coming this fantastic evening. Before we proceed, I would like to ask that everybody stay here through the entire program out of respect for each individual who is being recognized this evening. Once we've completed all of the presentations, you will have an opportunity to leave and enjoy the rest of your evening. In addition, when you come forward for your certificate, please take a moment to pause with Mr. Sturdivant and myself for a photograph, then move to your right, remain at the front, and we'll take a photo of students and coaches if you are part of a team. So, Mr. Sturdivant, if you can join me down front. Thank you, sir.
I'm going to traumatize him.
In June, FFA students from Frederick County and Robert E. Ailer Middle Schools traveled to Virginia Tech in Blacksburg, Virginia for the Virginia FFA State Convention. The results are as follow. Representing Frederick County Middle School, Plant Science Team, second place, Elizabeth Lamar. Representing Robert E. Ailer Middle School, Food and Fiber Team, second place, Neville For the Small Companion Animal Care Team, first place, Emma Walco. The FFA Quiz Bowl Team, second place in written test and the oral round, Ella Docdallaro. If Bennett Wise could come forward. Bennett Wise has been named a semifinalist for the National Merit Scholarship Program. Bennett is one of 16,000 high school seniors to receive such recognition this year. Over 1.3 million juniors from about 20,000 high schools across the country enter the competition. Semifinalists represent less than 1% of U.S. high school seniors. To enter the National Merit Scholarship Program, students had to meet a certain score for the PSAT-NMSQT. This was administered as juniors, and congratulations to Bennett. Now, we would like to recognize our exceptional group of individuals within Frederick County Public Schools. The hard work of our school bookkeepers has led to a truly remarkable accomplishment. For the second consecutive year, they have achieved a zero findings audit for the Student Activities Fund. This remarkable achievement reflects their unwavering commitment to financial excellence. Judy Rissler from Apple Pie Ridge Elementary. The Inspiration Award is given to a staff member who did something inspirational for the students, staff, parents, or community as a whole. Tonight's recipient is Sheila Heischman, an analyst with our finance department. Sheila was nominated by 11 different FCPS school bookkeepers for her unwavering support. Here are several comments provided by those who nominated her. She is always there for us when we call or email needing assistance. She goes to the school and helps us stay current with work if we unexpectedly have to be away for an extended period of time. Sheila is always very kind, patient, and very supportive. Sheila is the bookkeeper's right hand. She is always the person I call when issues arise that I am unable to solve.
May I just say, in the moment, that this is the best part of being on the school board, is getting to recognize all the wonderful students and all the wonderful staff that we have. With that said, our superintendent is going to talk about administrative appointments.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I think you'll keep that sentiment going to add to our administrators to this amazing team of individuals here in Frederick County. So, we do have some administrative appointments, so just bear with us here. First is the new principal of Apple Pie Ridge Elementary, Mrs. Bethany Kraus. Please come on forward. Mrs. Kraus is transitioning into this new role as the recent assistant principal at Apple Pie Ridge. She's devoted her career to Apple Pie Ridge Elementary, having served there as an intervention resource teacher for four years and a kindergarten teacher for 11 years. She holds a bachelor's in elementary education from Shepherd University, a master's in educational leadership from James Madison University. Please join me in congratulating her on her new role.
So, first I have to say, Dr. Hammer, he was at Apple Pie Ridge today, and he was introducing and said I'd been there for 47 years. And I said, "I'm not even 40 yet, so I'm doing pretty good." But I do want to take this time to thank each one of you, board members, Dr. Hammer, Ms. Knight, Mr. Thompson, for the opportunity. I have been at Apple Pie Ridge. It is home, and I truly feel blessed and honored to be able to serve the students and the teachers and the families. And so, I'm looking forward to this opportunity to serve in that capacity. And we have a great, great community, and I'm just really excited and honored to have it. So, thank you.
Next, I would like to call up Mr. Jonathan Ferenger as our new supervisor of school counseling and 504s. Come on up, please. He recently served as a student support specialist since 2019 and lead school counselor at Admiral Byrd Middle School for the prior 14 years. Thank you for your service. Before joining Frederick County Public Schools, he served as a clinical supervisor, forensics therapist, mobile crisis team member, therapeutic staff support member, a truancy officer, and a private investigator. To say the least, he is prepared to do To say the least, he is prepared to do this job. Mr. Ferenger holds a Bachelor of Arts in Sociology from Millersville University of Pennsylvania, and a Master's in Secondary School Counseling from Indiana University of Pennsylvania. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Ferenger to his new role. Congratulations.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Dr. Hummer, Mr. Thompson, Ms. Knight, and members of the school board and community. I'm very honored and grateful to accept the position of Supervisor of School Counseling, Social Workers, and Section 504. I want to thank Mrs. Knight, Mr. Strong, Mrs. Duckworth, and members of the Selection Committee for this incredible opportunity. I'm excited to serve the students, staff, and families of Frederick County Public Schools. Our work as school counselors and social workers is vital. I look forward to the privilege of working alongside a team of dedicated counselors and social workers who are truly on the front lines, making a profound impact on our students' lives. Thank you.
Next up is Denise Orndorf as our new Instructional Supervisor of Instructional Technology and Innovation. Come on forward, please. Ms. Orndorf has most recently served as an Instructional Technology Coach supporting Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School, Middletown, and Enrep. Before FCPS, she worked for Shenandoah County Public Schools for 27 years as an Instructional Technology Resource Coach, Computer Lab Teacher, and Elementary Classroom Teacher. Lot of experience. Ms. Orndorf holds a Bachelor's Degree in Psychology from James Madison University, Master's Degree in Curriculum and Instruction from the University of Phoenix, and a Certification in Computer Science Career Studies from Laurel Ridge Community College. Welcome, Mrs. Orndorf.
Thank you, board members and Dr. Hummer. I'm truly honored and humbled to serve as a Supervisor of Instructional Technology and Innovation for our division. I'm excited to work alongside our Instructional Technology Coaches and the Curriculum and Instructional Teams in our county to ensure our students are engaged and empowered in all their learning. Thank you for entrusting me with this opportunity to serve you and this division.
Thank you. Next up is Rachel Reed as our new Coordinator of K-12 Social Sciences. Please come forward. Mrs. Reed has served as a Social Studies Teacher at James Wood High School since 2008. Thank you for your service. She holds a Bachelor's in Social Studies Education from Mercyhurst University and a Master's in Education from James Madison University. Please join me again in welcoming you to your new role.
Dr. Hummer and members of the board, thank you so much for this opportunity. I truly feel that investing in education in the community that you live is always the right choice, and I feel like if I can support teachers throughout bettering our educational system, then I'm excited for the job. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Brandon Caton. Please come on forward, please, as the new Director of Facility Services. Mr. Caton also has a plethora of services, where he recently served as the Director of Operational Safety and Facilities for Jefferson County Schools in West Virginia. During Mr. Caton's longstanding career with Jefferson County Schools, he also served as an Assistant Principal for three years, Head Teacher for three years, and a PE Teacher for five years. He holds a Bachelor of Arts in Secondary Education from Shepherd University and a Master's in Educational Leadership from Wheeling Jesuit University. Please join me in welcoming Brandon to Frederick County Public Schools.
Good evening. First off, I just want to say thank you to all the members of the board, Dr. Hummer. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm extremely excited. I appreciate it, and I'm looking forward to continuing all the great work in the facilities here in Frederick County Schools.
Thank you. All right, we've got two more here, Mr. Chair. Next up, I would like to call down Melissa Hayman, who has our new Assistant Principal of James Wood High School. Come on down. She recently served as a Special Education Teacher at James Wood High since 2020, and as a Special Education Lead for the past year. She previously served as a Special Education Teacher at James Wood Middle School for five years, and a Special Instructional Assistant at Charando High School for 10 years. Again, thank you for your service to Frederick County Public Schools. She also was a Supervisor of the Adult Day Program at Community Alternatives of Virginia for three years. She holds an Associate's Degree in General Studies from Lord Fairfax Community College, a Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice from ODU, a Master's Degree in Special Education from Regent University, and a Certificate in Educational Leadership from Salem University. So again, plethora of schooling there. Please join me again in welcoming you to your new role. Thank you.
Dr. Hummer, members of the board, and everyone involved in the selection process, I am so honored to accept this role, and I'm grateful for the trust placed to me to support our students, our staff, and our community. I'm committed to fostering a safe, inclusive, and inspiring learning environment each and every day. Thank you so much.
All right. Last but not least is our new HR Supervisor of Recruitment, Retention, and Engagement, Mr. Daniel West. Please come on forward, please. Mr. West comes to FCPS from Frederick County Community College, where he has served since 2019, most recently as a Talent Acquisition Manager and a Title IX Coordinator. Previously, he was a Talent Management Coordinator as well. His prior five years of experience include serving as an HR Generalist at North Spring Behavioral Healthcare, Recruiter at American Public University, Nurse Recruitment Coordinator at Valley Health System, and Recruitment Coordinator at Shirts Communications Incorporated. Mr. West holds a Bachelor's Degree in Business Administration from Shepherd University and a Master's Degree in Management with Concentration in HR from American Public University System. We are looking forward to what you can bring here to Frederick County Schools. He is also a Society for Human Resources Management Senior Certified Professional. Please join me in welcoming Mr. West to Frederick County Public Schools.
Dr. Hummer, members of the board, thank you so much. Thank you for having me here this evening. I just want to thank everybody that was in on my panels, including my most recent one, Mr. Thompson, Kristin, Rachel back there. Just so very grateful to be a part of this team, and look forward to continuing the great work that they've done, just bringing in the great staff and educators that we have within our county, as well as retaining the ones that we already have. So, looking forward to it. Thank you.
That is it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right, at this point, we'd like to pause for a few moments to allow those who would like to leave to do so, and enjoy the rest of your evening. If you'd like to stay, please feel free to do so. Next up is Citizen Comments. Frederick County School Board is pleased to receive public comments at each month of the meeting for members of the public, which include residents of Frederick County, Virginia, including residents of Winchester City, Virginia, FCPS students, parents, and legal guardians of FCPS students, FCPS employees and businesses located within Frederick County, Virginia. Individuals speaking to the board will be allotted three minutes. Those individuals representing groups or organizations will be allotted five minutes with one representative per group. Upon recognition by the Chair, speakers should approach the lectern to speak to the school board. Members of the audience and speakers are expected to be courteous to others and model for students how to respectfully participate in public meetings by speaking and behaving in such a manner that adheres to the FCPS Code of Student Conduct. Complaints regarding FCPS employees should first be submitted to the school principal or to the school board office. Complaints regarding individual students should be submitted to the school principal or the appropriate school official. School board is committed to showing respect and courtesy to all citizens. Comments that are not protected under the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution will not be tolerated. This includes comments that are vulgar, obscene, threatening, and comments that are intended to incite violence or other breaches of the peace. Members of the audience are not permitted to interrupt the speaker or meeting by asking questions or making comments. Signs, posters, placards, banners, or like objects are permitted into the school board's meetings only if the individual possesses such items, remain in the back of the room so as not to restrict the view of those attending the meeting in person. Violation of the guidelines will result in the Chair ruling the speaker out of order. Continued violation may result in removal from the premises. Chair has discretion concerning public participation at school board meetings. School board meetings are taped recorded for the purpose of clarification and development of official minutes. Mr. Nury, you are up, sir.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Brian Nury, resident of the Opecan District. I'd like to address some comments that were made at recent committee meetings concerning vaping. Most notably, Vice Chair Klein, at the August Building and Grounds Committee meeting, you commented that students caught with vapes should be turned over to the SRO for punitive consequences, and to make the punishment so severe they'll never touch it again. To quote, "Arrest them, give them some jail time, whatever it takes, they're possessing it illegally, it's in the school." While technically true that it is illegal, the penalty for underage possession of nicotine-derived products in Virginia consists at most of a penalty of up to $100 or up to 20 hours of community service for the first offense, and a civil penalty up to $250 for subsequent violations. So increasing the penalties isn't really in this board's power, and it's excessive. And then to prove that, according to NIH, juveniles who are criminally punished for misdemeanors have a 30% chance of reoffending and an 11% chance of being convicted again. A 2018 study by the University of Tennessee cites the problem of sending juveniles to criminal punishment as a similar likelihood of becoming adult offenders, proving that the school-to-prison pipeline that most schools want to avoid, especially for black and brown students where they're disproportionately punished. However, the most common solution to the vaping problem is installing sensors. Systems across the nation are installing these sensors like Halo to detect students vaping. However, recent reports by NBC4 and Fox 5 dated September 17th and 18th spotlighted reports from Stafford County, Virginia, and Montgomery County, Maryland, showing issues of false alarms being triggered by something as simple as flushing toilets, spraying perfume, and deodorants, generating hundreds, if not thousands, of false reports daily, some schools reporting up to 60% false triggers. If this county is considering spending the estimated $1.1 million on these sensors, we might want to look into something more cost-effective, like addiction counseling for children and parents. But if we are going to drop the hammer on kids for simply possessing nicotine products on campus, we can add a fourth E to the desired outcomes of FCPS students, making it employed, enlisted, enrolled, also entered into the system. Now, with my remaining 30 seconds, I'd like to hold a moment of silence for the students at Evergreen High School, who had a shooting on September 10th, Cody Becker, Mark Baker, and Isaiah Emmanhauser, the three officers killed in Pennsylvania on September 17th, and the more than 300 fatal victims during 300-plus mass shootings across the country this year. So if you'd join me in a moment of silence for them as well. Thank you very much.
All right, next up is the Superintendent's Report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I would like to thank the school board for all the proclamations that you recognize, and for this month, recognizing school bus safety, our school lunch staff, and bullying prevention month, which are all very, very important, as we know. Our bus drivers, aides, and Transportation Office work tirelessly to ensure our students get to school safely and on time. We have a fantastic start to this year, and that is a large part to ensuring that our routing is done efficiently and safely. I also want to thank our cafeteria workers for their efforts in serving not only nutritious meals, but very tasty as well, and making sure that our students have food every single day. They are a significant backbone to our organization, and we thank them for their dedication and support. And lastly, we take bullying very seriously, as you know. We have structures and supports in place so that our students and staff feel that if they have been bullied or witnessed bullying, that they have a place to go so we can work through those processes accordingly. Bullying leads to very serious mental health complications and issues, and we want to make sure that we are staying on the proactive side of these issues in our schools. Thank you so much for your efforts in partnering with us in making sure that we are putting these preventative measures in place to prevent these bullying behaviors. I am also significantly proud of our students and staff to share the same sentiment that Mr. Sturtevant shared earlier. I want to also welcome all of our new administrators, which by the way, those were all administrators that was a domino effect, because we believe in building from within, and we're looking forward to all of the great work that they will continue here in Frederick County. I also want to give second accolade to all of our bookkeepers for that perfect audit. I need everybody to know and understand that that is not easy, and Mrs. Anderson will share with you that that is a lot of work, that is a lot of dedication, and they make a lot of enemies that way, because they tell people, "You can't do that." So I thank them for their tireless efforts, because when we say we're good stewards of our dollar, we are good stewards of our dollar, and that is why. So thank you, Mrs. Anderson, for your leadership, for leading your team to making sure these teams take these audits very, very seriously. We continue to have a phenomenal start to this school year. Operationally, our buses continue to run very, very smoothly. Breakfast and lunches, as I mentioned, continue to be very served in a very, what I like to say, tasty manner, as well as our front office staffs continue to be a positive voice for this school division. Our teachers and aides have also done an amazing job transitioning into this new year as they manage their day-to-day, along with adjusting to these new instructional changes we are implementing with the rollout of our new strategic plan, which we are all very excited about. I am very proud of our progress. We still have a lot of work to do, and we have the right people to make those gains. With that being said, however, we sent out communication to all of our staff and parents about the new proposed cut scores at the state level, and we are also providing you, the board, with this information as well. I want to make it very, very clear that I and our team here is unwavering when it comes to raising the bar for our students, as they always live up to the standard we establish in order for them to be successful in the next stages of their careers. That is without question. However, changing the scores in the middle of a year creates some very serious pivoting and complications for our building-level staff, and we are very concerned about that. We've made some serious progress last this past year based on the targets that were established in the beginning of the year and provided by the state at that time. We also know that the areas we need to continue to improve, and those areas, we will continue to address. For all the staff here listening, as well as the staff that are here in the audience, please continue to stay the course, and we will prevail. Our students will be successful and meet those standards. Resilience is one of our best characteristics as educators, and we will get through this. Please, please, do not think of yourself any less than a great educator as you are. As we continue to receive this information, we will continue to provide updates. And again, I just want to thank all of you for your hard work and dedication to the progress that we are making and will continue to make. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and that's all I have at this time.
All right. Up next is the Gifted Advisory Committee Report.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Dr. Hummer, members of the school board. I'm very pleased tonight to introduce two members, the leadership of our Gifted Advisory Committee. They represent our parent leadership. We have Courtney Barnhart, who is our Gifted Advisory Chair, and Maggie Kinsey, who is our Vice Chair. So the Gifted Advisory Committee, we just started our work, and it really serves two purposes. We have two deliverables. So we will review the local plan for gifted education. We determine then to the extent to which that plan was implemented in the previous year, and then a year from now, we will be back to make recommendations to our superintendent and to the school board. A quick snapshot of gifted education, so we serve gifted learning in two areas. One, our gifted academic program, which is general intellectual aptitude, meaning that we serve students who demonstrate high ability across a variety of areas, not just a specific aptitude for English or math. We have our staffing, our teachers, they serve multiple schools. So for example, at the elementary level, we have four teachers who serve 12 schools. They are responsible for the screening, the evaluating, the instruction, and also collaborating with colleagues to differentiate curriculum, to make sure our high-achieving students are receiving appropriate instruction. At the middle and high school level, we serve through elective classes and a gifted independent study, in which students are given a community-based mentorship, and then also through our Governor's School Program, so Mountain Vista Governor's School and regional Governor's School Programs. We also serve gifted visual arts, so these are students- We also serve gifted visual arts. So these are students in grades three through eight who have a high aptitude for artistic creativity and expression, and our art teachers in the schools, they provide that instruction, they provide pull-out gifted art classes, and then we have some advanced elective classes built into our schedule. With our Gifted Advisory Committee, we met, we had our first meeting last month, and this was the first review of the local plan for gifted education. So we don't have any formal recommendations tonight, but our committee leadership is going to talk a little bit about their role and some of their findings in that first review of the plan.
Good evening.
Mr. Chair, if I may. So we have the presentation up there as well, if you want to scroll through that.
Sure.
There you go. Thank you.
All right. So, good evening. I am the Gifted Advisory Chair. My name is Courtney Barnhart. I have one gifted student in Jameswood High School and another gifted student at Apple Pie Ridge Elementary. I am passionate about making sure all students in the gifted program at every grade level have access to the support and opportunities they need to thrive. Our committee is made up in part of six parents with children in gifted programs throughout the school division, including elementary, middle, high school, and Mountain Vista Governor's School. Our bylaws do call for at least 10 parent members, so we are currently looking for more parents to join and help represent our gifted education community. I'm not a good public speaker, so bear with me, please. Hi, I am the vice chair of the Gifted Advisory Committee. My name is Maggie Kinsey, and I have one child in the gifted program at Gainsborough Elementary. I chose to serve on the Gifted Advisory Committee because I'm deeply connected to this school system. I was a student in Frederick County Public Schools, and I now serve as a social worker for Frederick County Public Schools. I care deeply about the well-being and success of all students, and I'm committed to helping shape a program that supports and challenges gifted learners in meaningful ways. The committee benefits from the expertise of five professionals, staff members from Frederick County Public Schools, that include administrators, a school counselor, and a teacher. They represent all grade levels to provide diverse insights into gifted education.
We touched on some of this. This next slide just gives a snapshot, a brief overview of our gifted services. So you can see we have gifted academic and our gifted visual arts. Those numbers there, that represents the number of students that we have on our rosters. That number is always changing, so that's what we had, I think, ended last year with. And so those numbers, we're constantly getting referrals and doing new evaluations. I will direct you to the last column with the new enrollment, and so this shows referrals through the eligibility process. And so on the top there, you can see, at the elementary level, we received 208 referrals for gifted education. 67 of those students were found eligible. And across the board, about 60% of our referrals come from professional staff, 30% are parent referrals, and then we pick up about another 10% with students transferring into Frederick County that were identified as gifted in another school division. With the identification for visual arts, it's a little different, because we don't have nearly as many parent referrals. Our art teachers do the majority of the screening through structures they have set up. So they have a screening process, and they are collaborating and working with classroom teachers to talk about students who they know have a high aptitude for artistic expression and creativity.
Okay, so Mr. Lingle mentioned that we have met one time. So our committee came together, and for basically the entire committee, it was the first time we had all taken a look at the 2023 to 2029 local plan. But in that meeting, we began identifying key strengths, questions to explore for further exploration, and we explored shared aspirations for the future of this program, or identified aspirations for the future of this program. From that initial review, we have identified four foundational strengths that reflects the district's commitment to a comprehensive, equitable, and transparent approach to gifted education. First, our committee role is grounded in a shared understanding of the foundational elements of the district's plan and a broad, inclusive definition of giftedness. Second, we are committed to supporting a fair and comprehensive identification process that uses multiple data points to recognize potential in all students. Next, through clear timelines and a transparent referral process, we work to ensure families are informed and engaged every step of the way. Lastly, we advocate for equitable representation across all student groups, helping to ensure that talent is recognized and nurtured in every classroom. With those strengths in mind, I'll now turn it over to Maggie, who will walk us through the key questions we've identified for further exploration, as well as the aspirations guiding our committee's ongoing work.
Thank you, Courtney. As Courtney mentioned, as a committee, we are focused on exploring key questions about access and support within the gifted program, while also working towards shared aspirations for a more inclusive, equitable, and enriching experience for all gifted learners. In reviewing the local plan, our committee identified several important questions to explore further, first of which include the resources and opportunities available for high-achieving students in today's educational landscape. Second, we want to examine the particulars of the gifted screening process specifically at the elementary level. Third, we are examining how the general intellectual aptitude, as well as the visual and performing arts models, are being implemented. Lastly, we wish to explore how gifted education can more intentionally connect with career and technical education pathways. As we continue to review the local plan, our committee also noted and outlined key aspirations to help grow and strengthen the gifted program. They include improving parent communication to better inform families of available opportunities, as well as reviewing staffing to enhance student support and collaboration with general education teachers, and ensuring educators have access to efficient, effective tools for screening, evaluation, and instruction. At this point, I will turn it back over to Mr. Lingle, who will wrap up our presentation.
And really, to wrap up, I would just like to thank Ms. Barnhart and Ms. Kinsey for many of those advisory members in our first meeting having, it was their first time looking at the local plan. The questions that they were asking were thought-provoking and deep, and really made our professional staff think about how we are meeting the needs of not just gifted, but all of our high-achieving students. And so I see this committee doing, you know, doing great work, and I look forward to the continued collaboration. Do you all have any questions for the committee?
Mr. Chair. More of a comment, and then a question. I'm glad to see under the questions that you recognize that we have some gifted and talented students at the career and technical education level. And those students, it seems like they get left out with this aspect of education. I don't know how you would go about tackling that, but I know that we've got people here in the audience that are over at Dow J that would really be beneficial in helping to collaborate with on that. I just, you know, I'm glad that they are being recognized, and I look forward to seeing where that goes. So I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Within our high school gifted independent study, that places students with a community-based, work-based mentorship, and they're doing very high-level research, and there's a very strong alignment to CTE. And so we just need to look at kind of what the next iteration of that might maybe.
100%. Thank you.
If I may, when I was looking at the graph, I noticed that there's a deficiency as they get older. And are you looking into that and trying to raise the bar on that?
So that reflects referrals over the course of one school year. The goal is to identify all of our students early. You know, and so we do the majority of our evaluations in elementary school, and then in middle, we typically will find a few in middle school, but we try to have a strong screening process at the elementary level, so that we're identifying all of our students early on who need additional support, so that we can begin really extending and enriching their academic experience.
I can see that, but as time goes on, they seem to lose interest, or something happens.
Yeah, and as students get into middle and high school, they also get involved in other things. And so some of the gifted classes are elective classes. We have students that want to participate in fine arts, or they may want to take CTE classes. And so whereas the elementary is pull-out instruction, they move into middle school and high school, and now they have all of these options to explore, which we want them to explore options. But we want to set a high standard for learning and for enriching their experience, no matter which pathway that they take.
Anything else? Thank you so much.
Thank you guys very much. Great job.
At this time, it gives me pleasure to ask Ms. Elise Stein-Dollar, I hope I got your last name right. As she's coming up here, she's going to give her a Bright Futures report. I can tell you that, having worked with her several times over the last, how many ever months it's been, if you've never been there to see what they do at Bright Futures and the impact that they have on the community, then you really need to go out. And she enjoys showing people what she does, but I'm going to tell you, she does an excellent job, and it's vital what she does for our community. Sorry to take up your time, but...
You can talk all night. Thank you very much. Thank you for that fabulous introduction. Hi again, my name is Elise, and I have the privilege of facilitating the Bright Futures Program, serving Frederick County Winchester City students with their most basic needs and making sure they are ready to come to school with every possible tool at our very generous community's disposal, ready to help them. This presentation is for information, and no actions are recommended at this time. You'll see this slide again at the end, but I suppose I have to read it out to you, since it's here. I'm going to touch on a few key things here today, our most recent initiatives and things that are coming up. So first thing is our food program, the real bread and butter of what Bright Futures does, pun intended. When hungry bellies are in our classrooms, they have no ears. There is no learning when our children in our schools are hungry. That is why it is our number-one focus at Bright Futures. Three ways we address that are most recent initiatives. We have our summer food distribution, which I'll touch on quickly, as well as our weekend food packs, which is probably what we're most well-known for, and then our new in-school food pantries, which I believe are the way of the future, and very exciting for me at Bright Futures to talk about. From there, I'm going to touch on our back-to-school support, because we are just about finished with that season. Very happy to hear that. And then, of course, our back-to-school basic needs assistance, which what that really means are the most basic items that we are helping with for our students, to provide for our students. That means things like coats, shoes on feet, sleeping bags for a child without a bed, the most basic need items that you can imagine that could make all the difference between a child finding success in school and not making it in that next day. So we're going to jump right into some food updates. The most recent big accomplishment for Bright Futures was our summer food distribution. This is an amazing program made possible through staff and volunteer staff throughout the summer months, in June, July, and August, where we drive all the way from Gore down south to Middletown and everywhere in between to our hotspots of need, and to make sure that our kids and our schools that may not have access to fresh food and vegetables, even milk and eggs this year for the first time, have access to food. This is such an incredible resource for our families, and the best thing is that every single thing we get for this program is donated, and the only thing it costs is our time. And so we have some incredible folks in our community, staff here, that take time out of their busy schedules to make this happen. And let me tell you, there is nothing like giving a child a fresh pineapple on a hot day, and milk and eggs to a mom who you can see that is just holding on by a thread. So this incredible program, it is all possible by these great volunteers, and so we want to thank them first and foremost. But we could never, ever accomplish our weekend food pack without volunteers. For about 30 weeks of the year, on the weekends, we send these food packs home with our students. A food pack is eight food items, which replicates basically what you would get at a free and reduced lunch. Two breakfasts, two lunch, two snacks, a fruit and a vegetable, and we find that is just enough that even a kindergartner could carry it home, and enough that hopefully, when you come back to school on Monday, if there is nothing in your pantry, it can get you through from that Friday afternoon until you come back to school on Monday. And I couldn't think about our food pack right now without thinking of one small little boy who has been asking his teacher, "Is it time for the food pack to start?" Because I take that bag home with me, and I know that little bag, I hide it away up in my room. It is what I eat all weekend until I come back to school on Monday. And I know the teachers are feeling it too, and I'm really excited, because the food pack starts next week, because we see it in our teachers' faces, how much easier it is to have a child in your classroom who is fed, who has something in their belly, who is ready to learn, because I cannot imagine absorbing algebra on an empty belly with two days of hunger. And I cannot imagine reciting Shakespeare on any given day well, let alone when I'm starving. So thank you again to our donors who make this possible, who are the ones dropping off the snacks, who are bringing us all these incredible valuable items that are going right from your pantries to our cupboards and to our kids' backpacks to take home. But, of course, hunger doesn't just happen on Fridays. We see emergency hunger situations every single day in the schools, and our counselors and school staff are the heroes here, that are seeing our kids coming in starving, or getting ready, dragging their feet at the end of the day, leaving hungry with nothing, and they know that there is nothing for them when they leave, and their next meal will be the next morning when they have breakfast. One thing we're able to do to combat that is have a tool for our staff members and to have an emergency solution, a food pantry at all of our high schools, and soon to be every single middle school, hopefully within the week. I need someone to build me a cupboard. We're almost there, but there's not enough hours in the day. But we are almost there, and soon every school in middle and high will have these food pantries, so that there is an emergency solution for our staff members and students when there is no other solution available. And I'm hopeful that this will be the way of the future, and we can roll this out across all of our schools in the near future. Well, if you can imagine not having money for food, could you imagine making a choice between a loaf of bread and a, you know, a backpack? And for us, that's a pretty easy solution. Which one would you pick? For me, it would be the bread every day, and I would go to school without the backpack, so that I had something in my belly. But I love food, but that is neither here nor there, but I have a feeling most of us do. For some kids, though, this would look like going to school without all the tools you need to be successful. This year was an amazing year for us, a high watermark, really. Over 1,100 backpacks given right back out to the kids in our schools, so that they show up on the first day, ready to learn. And our counselors have a solution when they see someone who isn't ready, to have them have a backpack when they walk in the door, and they can be just like everybody else. It's an amazing resource. Of course, on top of that, we have classroom and clinic support. We want all of our classrooms to have everything they could ever desire. I want every teacher to have every tool they could dream of, and I never want somebody to have to dig into their own pocket, because they want some child to have markers. Every child should have what they need. And because we have an incredibly generous, incredibly generous community, our kids do have just that. We have had an insane beginning of our year, 141 school supply and clinic requests filled in the first month alone. That is one trip to a school is one of those. And one of those trips is not just, you know, a binder. You're talking cases of items, a lot of stuff, a ton of stuff, all donated to Bright Futures. And all we do is leverage it with three folks and an incredible community that brings the stuff, helps us sort it. We work with everyone here to make it happen, and then we get it right back out to our classrooms. It's an incredible resource that we're able to disperse all of these amazing tools. And you can see some of these great photos here. These are actually from Frederick County Middle. Thank you, Lisa Booth, if you're out there, for taking these photos, and these amazing kids that are having the best time with all their new stuff. But of course, it's not just school supplies. Year-round, we have basic need challenges constantly at Bright Futures. So what does this look like for us? Hygiene, shoes, clothing, bedding, and so much more. You can see some of the stats from this, just the start of this year. We are inundated. For me, when I look at those shoes on this picture here, I can think of one particular child. There is one child that came up to us in the end of last year, that we knew, we was taking off his shoes every recess, because he wanted to run and play tag with the other kids. His shoes were so small that he could hardly walk, but his parents had no way to financially contribute to get him another pair of shoes. But because of these shoes, which were actually donated, again, thank you, Valley Health, these were all donated through a drive. We were able to get these shoes on that little boy, and it is amazing what a new pair of shoes can do for a little guy. It can change their whole little world. But this is all through donation that we are able to source these items, get it right back out to our schools, and our kids, you know, were changing their lives. It's crazy, but with something as simple as a pair of shoes. I want to thank you all again for making our work possible. This is, I'm going to keep it short and sweet, because I do value your time, but these kids, these are ones that are living right here in our community, that could be just right around the corner, the kids you see waiting at the bus stop, maybe without a coat on on a cold day. Sometimes it's a fashion choice, sometimes it's not. And for those of those who make the choice, and they want to wear a coat, but they don't have one, that is why we are here. We are here to support these kids, who are waking up, and they are in darkness, and they are struggling, and our teachers, who are looking around, and they have no other resource, and they have no one else to call. Thankfully, we are there to answer the phone. And for some of these kids who are waking up in darkness, it is through your support at the board level and our incredible community that we are able to turn on a light. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. How'd you like your sign?
My sign is great. Thank you for your help. We've had a lot of requests and calls lately. My sign is great. Thank you for your help. We've had a lot of requests and calls lately.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so very much for your presentation, and thank you for the good work that you're doing on behalf of our students and staff here in Frederick County. So how many cupboards do you need?
Oh, gosh. I mean, I've got one for all the high schools, one for all the middle schools.
So you need one for all the elementary schools?
There you go.
All right.
They're kind of specific. Each one is kind of custom, to suit a need, to suit a space, to meet our requirements. But lately, I'm looking at something that's kind of locker-like that can be secured and is, excuse me, you know, closes stuff in nicely. But it is very customizable to every school in the space. So we have to, we really work with each school to make sure it works for them.
Okay, that's great. So I think I can help you with that. So if you can give me some dimensions and tell me where it's going to go, I'd be happy to try and help and lend a hand.
I'll be calling you tomorrow.
Sounds good.
So to that point, to Mr. Bell's point, are you using contractors to put these in, or is it just your own staff?
No, no contractors.
Well, volunteer contractors. I'm just wondering if there's any volunteer builders around town that's willing to do that, other than the sweat equity Mr. Bell has volunteered?
But really, it's staff. It's our, we have volunteers in the community. We have, I mean, SRO has built a punch of them for us. I mean, we have people out of goodness of their heart finding a little extra time. I mean, beg, borrowing, and stealing, and then, you know, we're getting it done. But one at a time, it's very doable. So we're getting it done.
Because this may be a really great opportunity for those companies to come in and help with that. I don't know...
I am all ears.
If we could get, like... Yeah, community partners. Is there any kind of red tape that they would need to go through as far as getting into the schools?
No, no. I mean, Elise does a really good job about getting out to the community, and we try to connect her to those right people. But yeah, I mean, if there's other people out there that are willing to donate, Elise will not turn them away.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sure there's a lot of businesses that could be more than happy to help with that for marketing reasons, for right, all the things, all the things that would benefit them would benefit you.
Yes, 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 a hundred times. Yes, for sure.
And, no, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Bell.
Do you find yourself needing, do you need materials? Do you need money? Do you need, I mean, I can't even build a birdhouse straight, but I'll write you a check. Like, tell me what Greenwood Mill Elementary needs, and we'll sponsor the one for them.
Everything, all at once. So we, not only do we need cupboards, we need physical items donated to go into these cupboards. We need, I mean, and then we need dollars, because when we don't have something that's been donated, we need to have the flexibility to go out and get it. I mean, it's not always, it's not always a food item. Sometimes that's me today, getting a special pair of shoes for a child with a disability that needed a special pair of shoes so that they could still attend their gym class. I mean, so it is sometimes a financial donation that gives us the flexibility to immediately respond and, you know, level the playing field for somebody. But other times, it's literally just a box of Cheez-Its. And those, you would not believe the amount of Cheez-Its and, you know, granola bars and Pop-Tarts that we go through, because there is no other way to get them besides donations. So we just rely so heavily on our community for those. When you find a good deal, give me a call. When you have something and you stop by a store, just bring it on in. We'd love it. We'd love to take it. Always need snack foods, always need donated items. But yes, if there's something specific, maybe not the crooked birdhouse, but like, I would love to talk to you about it.
You don't want me building a cabinet. In all seriousness, like Mr. Bell said, get with me afterwards, because my wife and I will happily sponsor one from Greenwood Mill.
I would love that. That's where my daughter goes.
Yeah.
Cool.
Quick question. What about snow days? I know kids, how do you guys get food to those kids?
Snow days break my heart, because there are so many children that rely so heavily on their school meals. That is where they get all of their food. For hundreds of our kids, they only eat at school and through food that is provided through school. It breaks my heart when we have a snow day, because that forces us to have tough decisions, that we have to really talk and figure out logistics. We can usually rebound and make the food pack happen with one snow day, but if it's on the day that all the food is delivered, if it's on the day that, you know, food is supposed to be given out on a Friday, I mean, it breaks our heart every single time, because I know there are kids who are going hungry on those snow days. And it's not just the food pack, it is the hot meal that there may not, they might not have any other resource to receive.
Yeah. It'd almost be nice if there was some sort of phone tree with some of us that's got four-wheel drive vehicles, if we could deliver people.
I would, I would love that, but half the time, I swear, they fall in the packing days where stuff is assembled, and like, there's so many other logistics. There's, I could talk to you for hours about how this all works. But we really, to make it possible, our food pack, our food pack alone, it takes four days of the week. And from, I mean, we're talking 1,500 kids, the compilation, the sourcing, the unpacking, the, you know, organization of all the volunteers, the reloading. Come on out to Bright Futures, I would love to show you how this works. I love logistics. But three to four days at the absolute barest of minimal is how long it takes to turn around 1,500 kids' worth of food for delivery.
I bet.
And it is a hustle. And we'd love to show it to you. Come on out.
Mr. Bell, to your point of volunteering to build the shelves, I'd be happy to donate lumber, you know? That's great. Yeah, you shouldn't have to put it all on your shoulders. So just get with me, let me know what you need. Will do. Work us some overtime, so. Yeah.
I see a field trip happening here. Let's do it.
I'm in.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, one more question. Have you ever, have you been considering fridges, which are the free refrigerators to have in the schools as well?
That's a great question. So right now, we don't have like a gigantic fridge or anything to accept refrigerated items at Bright Futures.
I see.
And it is a whole different level of regulations to meet those.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah. It's not a small decision to make. We have some small fridges that we are able to accept small stuff on a, you know, like, a reasonable basis. But when you get into big-time refrigeration, that is a different matter altogether. You're involving like, you know, refrigerated trucks, health department. It becomes more and more complicated. When we stick to mostly dry and non-perishable, we're able to avoid a lot of that. But then also, I love children, and I know that my six-year-old would take a gallon of milk, and she would drop it in her backpack, and it would never make it home. So we generally try to stick to very sturdy items, relatively childproof, relatively durable.
Well, sure.
So like, you know, we're talking the best things to take home are things like the jars of peanut butter, cans of tuna, relatively indestructible, the Chef Boyardees that are in a can. I love those. Every day, I'll send those home. Something that a child can take in a backpack, and if they drop it, we do not get a phone call from mom saying a glass is shattered, or, you know, there's eggs in her backpack.
My favorite were the roller coasters Chef Boyardee, they were so good.
Well, it's one of our most popular items.
Ninja Turtles.
Yeah. Can never get enough. We have one little girl that I know we support heavily. She goes home every single night, and her mom works nights, and she feeds herself dinner every single night. And we source a lot of Chef Boyardee and other pop-top, easy refrigerated, or not refrigerated, shelf-stable items that are not refrigerated, that she can take home with her. We don't have to worry about it trying to stay cold on the bus for her. And like, that time that it sits in her backpack, we want to make sure it's safe for her to eat. And she takes it home, and that's what she eats most nights, because there's no one else to feed her. And so this, it's that shelf-stable stuff that's really a game-changer for us and gives us that flexibility to make sure the kids are not, they're not sitting on, you know, a gallon of milk in their backpack for seven, eight hours unrefrigerated.
Of course.
But it is something to think about. I wonder if maybe there is something there. Maybe we can figure that out.
I think, yeah, it's just a problem-solving thing.
I love a problem.
Yep.
Do you ever send home dried milk?
You know, we have. We've had it donated before. We don't get it a whole lot. It's not a super popular item, but we have, we do actually have some. We give it out in especially crisis situations. We had a house fire for a Frederick County student last week, and that was actually in their bag, some things we sent home with them. Milk's important.
So not to beat the drum all day and drag this out, but having stood there and had Elise behind me while I was stuffing bags for food packs, it's an amazing operation. I really strongly suggest, if you have time, to go out and see it and to volunteer. And I know quite a few staff from here, I helped with the summer food distribution. I mean, it is like a military operation, but if you go there and let her give you the tour, you will, I mean, I knew there was issues in the county, but I didn't know how vast of a problem it was until hanging out in Bright Futures. And I'm telling you, if you can do anything for them, then I strongly suggest that you do it, because she does an awesome job, and it's something that we really need, and something that I think the community can value. So thank you for everything.
Thank you very much for those kind words. If you want to take action right now, visit our website, or just type into the Google machine, Bright Futures, Frederick, Winchester. You'll pull us up. And there are drives, drive templates you can print off right now if you want to get together. I mean, we have food we constantly are needing, and when the holidays are just around the corner, starting in, I think, about a week, it all kicks off again. And so you could sponsor a student and make their holiday a little brighter, too. So there's a lot of ways you can jump on stuff right now, or give me a call, and I'd love to give your group a tour, or arrange a little field trip. So thank you.
Thank you, Elise.
All right.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. This presentation is informational, only and no actions are recommended at this time, but donations are always welcome.
And building.
All right, thank you.
Thank you again. All right. There is no unfinished business, so we're going to move right on into new business. First, we have the Student Conduct Support, Student Conduct and Support Committee Report.
It's a short one, I promise. The Student Conduct and Support Committee had a meeting on August the 20th, 2025. Meeting was called to order at 5:06 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, the committee went into closed session to review and discuss individual student matters that would involve specific students, and particular information contained in their scholastic records, including disciplinary matters pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A.2. After reconvening and certifying the closed session, the committee voted to uphold the hearing officer's recommendation on a two-to-zero vote. Meeting adjourned at 6:21 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. And the only motion I have is I move that the board approve the minutes from the Student Conduct and Support Committee meeting held August 20, 2025.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the Finance Committee Report. Madam Vice Chair, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A meeting of the Finance Committee of the Frederick County School Board was held on September 3, 2025. The meeting was called to order at 4:30 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mrs. Anderson shared the fiscal year 2026 budget document and reviewed the full-time equivalent clerk-of-the-works positions. Mrs. Chapman discussed the financial audits to include the student fund and shared, and the shared, and shared, the fiscal year 2025 athletic financial report highlights. Mrs. Anderson reviewed the fiscal year 2025 school board funds financial statements, and Mrs. Smith discussed the health insurance reserve fund, as well as the consolidated services fund. Mrs. Reed reviewed the private purpose fund and the INREP operating and textbook funds. Mrs. Smith then discussed the school debt service fund and the school construction fund. Mrs. Seibert shared the school capital projects fund and the special grants fund and the textbook fund, and Mrs. Anderson reviewed the remaining obligated funds and discussed the fiscal year 2025 remaining unobligated funds, the bus fleet assets, the bus lifespan and replacement cycle, and the capital asset plans unfunded projects. She also reviewed the Bass Hoover Elementary School HVAC replacement request and the Dal J. Howard Center HVAC replacement request, together with Mr. Davis. The meeting adjourned at 5:45 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered in the Finance Committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. It was a big meeting. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the Finance Committee meeting on September 3, 2025?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would just like to say thank you to Ms. Anderson and her team. Knocked it out of the park again. Saw the awards coming up today. Yeah, it's not an easy undertaking. So, you know, we promised, I think, each and every one of us to be transparent on this board, and drive that down with the staff. And it doesn't take a lot with this staff. They're pretty open and honest about everything. So, you know, it was refreshing to see, once again, you know, we come out unscathed. Cheers.
Thanks, Mr. Atkins. Anyone else? All right. Well, we have four motions out of that meeting, so bear with me, they're a little lengthy. The first motion, I move the board approve the request for two additional clerk-of-the-works full-time equivalent positions to support the Middletown and Jordan Springs elementary expansion construction projects.
Second. Motion has been made, properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number two, I move the board approve and request, the request, for a budget adjustment to the school operating fund for $273,609.50, which represents the obligated funds received during fiscal year 2025 and requested to carry forward into fiscal year 2026.
Second. Motion has been made, properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move the board approve the request for a budget adjustment to the capital projects fund in the amount of $2,815,185, which represents the fiscal year 2025 remaining unobligated funds from the school operating fund to be used to purchase four replacement school buses and replace HVAC units at Bass Hoover Elementary School and Dal J. Howard Learning Center.
Second. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Just want to very briefly say about this. If you didn't get a chance, for those of you watching at home, please go back and watch the really, really helpful discussion that happened at this Finance Committee meeting, especially the section in which we talked about buses and some of the ages of the, there were buses still in operation today in those, what was it?
Ninety-six.
Hundreds and hundreds of miles driven just today that were in service when I was in middle school. So they're getting a little long in the tooth, and I especially appreciate Dr. Hummer and his staff finding ways to come up with the funds that we need to get rid of some of what Vice Chair Klein has called our Mad Max buses.
Yes.
And I'm very appreciative to see that we're going to do right by our drivers and kids.
They are. Seriously, some of them are awful. Awful.
Junk like parts that won't match.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, I move the board approve the minutes from the Finance Committee meeting held on September 3, 2025.
Second. Motion has been made, properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the Personnel Committee Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A meeting of the Personnel Committee of the Frederick County School Board was held on September 8, 2025. The meeting was called to order at 4:31 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Ms. Campbell gave a staffing update, which included professional vacancies, FY26; teacher vacancies by content, FY26; teacher vacancies by content, FY25 versus FY26; support staff vacancies, FY26; support staff vacancies, FY25 versus FY26. She also discussed professional vacancies filled as of 8/28/2025, and the years of experience of new teachers. Ms. Rinker gave a substitute update and shared the recruitment and retention update, which included celebrations of recruitment efforts and recruiting plans. Ms. Edwards Johnson discussed the FCPS employee services update to include the FCPS employee benefit highlight, employee perks, and Ms. Campbell and Dr. Hummer reviewed the human capital management system update. The meeting adjourned at 4:49 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to school board members. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the Personnel Committee meeting held on September 8? All right. Hearing none. We'll go to the motions page. And according to this, I have to move the board approve the minutes from the Personnel Committee meeting held on September 8, 2025.
Second. Motion has been made, properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Instruction Committee Report.
You get to hear from me again. So the Instruction Committee met, a meeting of the Instruction Committee of the Frederick County School Board was held on September 8, 2025. The meeting was called to order at 5:34 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Dr. Hummer shared a big thank you to the instruction team for their hard work on the presentations and reviewed the agenda. Ms. Swager discussed the summer school report. Dr. Hummer shared comments regarding the proposed SOL cut scores, and Ms. Nicola reviewed the proposed SOL cut scores. Ms. Knight shared the annual initiatives overview for effective schools framework, ESF. Ms. Muldowney and Dr. Myers gave an update on the annual initiatives overview for planning structures. PLCs and Mr. Strong reviewed the annual initiatives overview for bullying and vaping prevention and education implementation plans. Dr. Reeves and Mrs. Kaufman discussed the annual initiatives overview for special education. Programming for FCPS and Ms. Jordan reviewed amendments to Policy 437P. The meeting adjourned at 7:36 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee are included in the minutes provided to the board. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the Instruction Committee meeting held on September the 8? Hearing none. We do have two motions coming out of that particular meeting. Look, let's see. First, I move the board approve... First, I move the board approve the proposed amendments to policy 437P, administration of medications to students.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the final motion is that I move the board approve the minutes from the Instruction Committee meeting held on September 8, 2025.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And next is the Buildings and Grounds Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A meeting of the Building and Grounds Committee of the Frederick County Public Schools was held on September 22nd, 2025. The meeting was called to order at 4:33 PM and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the mi, excuse me, during the meeting, Mr. Whitaker discussed the CAP, the cap projects update. Mr. Shepherd gave an update on the fourth high school and flooring considerations. Reviewed the elementary expansion and shared, or elementary expansions and shared updates on the Shrando High School master plan and attentive timeline. He also discussed the CIP projects, the redistricting, redistricting process with attentive timeline, the James Wood High School baseball school board signage, as well as the James Wood High School booster pump. Mr. Holland gave a transportation update. Staff from Rappahannock Electric Cooperative reviewed the Millbrook High School and Redbud run easement for Rappahannock Electric Cooperative. And Mr. Thompson discussed the OmniTrax lease. The meeting adjourned at 5:33 PM. Additional details regarding the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to each board member. Do board members have any questions about what was covered at the Building and Grounds Committee meeting held on September 22nd? Alrighty. Got a couple of action items. All right. First one, Rappahannock Electric Cooperative easement. I move that the board approve the proposed right-of-way easement agreement with Rappahannock Electric Cooperative and authorize the chair to execute all necessary documents that are approved by legal counsel.
Second. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? I will add to this, there was a small, they called it a doughnut-sized spot that somehow was missed, so that's why we're going through this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
All right. Next up is the OmniTrax. I move that the board approve the proposed third addendum to the terminal lease agreement with Winchester and Western Railroad Company and authorize the chair to execute all necessary documents that are approved by legal counsel.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Madam Vice Chair, you got a comment?
Okay.
Any other, anyone else? Nope. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Lastly, I move that the board approve the minutes from the Building and Grounds Committee meeting held on September 22nd, 2025.
Second.
Motion has been made, properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on our list, we have the appointment of the superintendent's VDOE designee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, a little backstory on this information. Every year, you have to authorize individuals to sign in my stead if I'm not available. And those two individuals are my assistant superintendents. Usually approve this in January. Since Mr. Thompson came on board, we have to go ahead and approve that now, and then you will then reauthorize it again in January. So, that's why this is before you today.
Do we need to read that, or we need to make a motion?
Yeah, the motion is there in front of you. I was just giving you some backstory. Yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board approve and authorize Mr. Ben Thompson, Assistant Superintendent of Administration, and Ms. Ashante Knight, Assistant Superintendent of Instruction, to sign the VDOE reports, documents, requisitions, and other official correspondence in the superintendent's absence.
Motion has been made for appointment. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have approval of the Advancing Computer Science Education ACSE grant.
So, there's a motion before you. I'll be able to answer any questions about that. It's for $75,000. Looking at my team. George Mason is the fiscal agent, but they're requiring our signature to use those funds to support our computer science program.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bill.
I move the board approve the Advancing Computer Science Education ACSE grant.
Second.
Motion has been made, properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next is the presentation of the superintendent for his legislative priorities.
All right. So, Mr. Chair, I know I'm excited. I've talked to each of you. I know you continue to be excited about this new yearly tradition of meeting with our two delegates and state senator to talk about some legislative priorities we would like for them to take to the General Assembly. So, we've put together a list of items that we are recommending, that we propose to present to the two delegates and senator, and I want to present these to you this evening to see if you're good with these, and then I'm asking for you to vote or to make adjustments, as you know you're able to do. A reminder that this summit has been scheduled for October 16th from 6:00 to 7:30-ish, based on the questions that might come up at Admiral Byrd. All of the two delegates and senators have confirmed that they will be there for this event, and as I mentioned, we're asking you to approve these legislative priorities or make adjustments as you see fit. As we've talked about in the past, this is always just a great opportunity for us to have conversations, not only with our delegate and senator, but also with our community about the things that we're passionate about, that we would like to see changed at the state level. I do want to share with you and the public that because we presented a change to the cap, which was additional dollars we received, we did get an additional $3.5 million. So, this legislative summit can be successful if we are able to outline it accordingly and if they agree with some of the changes that we would like to see done at that state level. So, of course, these are essentially your legislative priorities we are recommending. So, if you have any adjustments or changes that you'd like for us to make, please make sure you let us know now, so we can get ahead of that. So, all of the items on here, as I mentioned, we were able to adjust that state cap, so of course, we took that off of the list. So, everything is going to be the same because all these other ones were not changed, but we did adjust some of the recommendations in regards to each of these areas. But we do have a new one, and we have Mrs. Campbell working with Mrs. Jordan in regards to what this looks like in regards to code. But we do have some staffing licensure issues that we would like for the state to address at this General Assembly level, which I'll dive in here for a second. But we are going to bring up again the COCA line and taking a look at a, hopefully, a new formula at the state level, so we can receive additional funding, so that we can continue to add on all the resources we need to keep the school division moving forward efficiently. Also, taking a look at increasing our post-secondary opportunities for our students, looking at that building and maintenance for our schools, and then, of course, looking at the safety of our schools through safety supports, as well as our school resource officers. So, just as a quick reminder, there is this imaginary line that separates Northern Virginia from the rest of Virginia. We do receive some of this, what's called cost of competing adjustment money, but if you go down to that third column or row there, we get about 1.8 compared to Loudon's 22 million. Now, last year, that was 18 million. So, that number has gone up, and that is less money that we do not receive. And I think for us, and as we know, last year when we had this conversation with them, that there would be essentially a domino effect of all the other divisions asking for the same thing. But I want to continue for us to utilize, we are the most northern county in Virginia. So, why they would not include us in this COCA calculation and adjustment is something that we have a lot of issues with, as I know you guys do as well.
And the fastest growing.
And the fastest growing in Virginia. And can you imagine what $22 million could do for our school division? And we would not, no longer have any issues with staff competing with Loudon County, as well as all these other divisions that are in Virginia. Next up is, as I mentioned, Mrs. Campbell is working very hard at identifying some areas that we need some support in, in regards to staffing and licensures. The first two is to support us, to help with the retention and recruitment of our teachers. The third one is an interesting one, and if you have any additional questions, Mrs. Campbell can answer them. But the state has a process, what's called a provisional license. And we appreciate all of our staff that are on a provisional license. However, we do have some staff that like to take advantage of that time, and after that third year, they will be on continuing contract, which makes it very difficult, because if they get those additional two years to complete that licensure and they're under par, they're already on that continuing contract track. And again, we definitely want to support all of our staff, but if we're giving them extensive time, we just want to make sure that it is indicated as such and not putting them on that continuing track process, if that makes sense. So, that's something that we've noticed, that we've had some issues with in the past, with some staff that have been performing below par and taking their time getting their licensure done. Again, this isn't to attack our staff. This isn't to make our staff look bad. It's, we have high standards for our staff. We want to have good staff in our classrooms, and we want to help support our staff to get their licensure, but we do not want to be stuck with an individual who will be below par. And we've had, had some issues where we've been stuck. So, we just want to make that recommendation at the state level. Please stop me if you guys have any questions, please. As always, we are trying to increase the CTE pathways and opportunities for our students, and that looks like a bunch of different ways in regards to adding on some additional staff. We're looking at potentially adding on some work-based learning coordinators at the school level. We do have some staff here that help with making those connections to the community, but as we know, there's a lot of folks in this community that want to be part of this process of adding pathways and opportunities for our students, and we are asking for some additional funds from the state to add on these additional staff that we need. And I want to make sure we emphasize with this that the state just came out with a new framework of three Es, which is post-graduation. Again, another unfunded mandate. So, if they're going to be making these mandates, which we agree with, adding pathways and opportunities for kids is a big deal, but please, help us with money so that we can continue to support these things coming down from the state, because we will be graded on that to determine if we are distinguished, on track, off track, or in needs of intensive support. We are just asking for those additional dollars to help keep us on the right track. And as I mentioned to you earlier, and as we already see, we're adding on some really, really great programs for our kids, and we want to be able to continue to do that. And we were able to use that, the state money, in order to build our data sciences, as well as our academic program for our students. Again, we deal with this every year in regards to maintaining our schools. We've made a lot of progress, thanks to our board of supervisors and to you for supporting this, but there needs to be some additional support at the state level in regards to how we're receiving revenue streams to support our aging buildings, our aging infrastructure. Our buildings are run every single day, as we know, and we are required by law to educate our students. So, there needs to be some sort of funding streams to help us and not just come from the locality. These are conversations that I have with a lot of other neighboring divisions as well, and hopefully, we'll start to see some changes at the state level to help us maintain our buildings. Last but not least, as you know, safety is very, very important to me, and I want to make sure that we're able to continue to add on the layers of structures and supports in each of our buildings from, we had ballistic glass presentations, we're looking at making sure all of our doors and our locks are up to par. We're also taking a look at the staff that's in our buildings. So, we just want to make sure that if there is a way for the state, again, who emphasized the need for these safety supports, if there's a way for them to add on these additional revenue streams, grants, what have you, so we can continue to add the safety, the safety structures that all of our students and staff and community deserve. So, as I mentioned, those are each of, I'm sorry, those are each of the legislative priorities as presented. I'm open up, of course, for any questions, and we have two motions before you, either adopting as is or making adjustments or changes, so that my team and I can get those prepared and ready for October 16th. And Mr. Chair, it looks like Mrs. Martin has a question.
I do. I was wondering if it would be feasible to, I don't know what you call it, work up something for the people in Frederick County, especially those have children coming here, to sign, to have ready for the delegates when they come here, to show that they understand what the COCA is, COCA?
COCA line, yes, ma'am.
Is, and that they feel that we definitely should have more of the funding. In other words, that they see that the citizens are truly behind this. It might put a little bit more emphasis on our need.
Sure, absolutely. You know, based on conversations that I've had with a lot of individuals in this community.
But if they actually can sign something, and they can do it online, put their name.
Um, yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
I do. I don't, I think that would kind of cross over into campaigning, which we can't do.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. So, I don't think that's something that we would be permitted to do. I mean, I like what you're saying, Mrs. Martin, about engaging in the community, which I do, and which you all do as well. I would say we could do that, but not engaging in signatures. Anytime you're telling somebody to endorse something, it kind of blurs the lines in regards to campaigning. But I'm more than happy to continue these conversations, as I've been doing in town halls, and if the community tells me they don't support the schools and the things we do, then I'll bring that to you, and that's different conversations for them to listen to.
Right.
But I think we would be kind of crossing a line there. And Mr. Chair, I don't want to overstep there, but yeah.
Because that might put some pressure on them.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
I do, I do. I think we could do that with these meetings, and they, from the conversations I've had with them, Mr. Chair, if I may, they support what we're doing and the direction we're going in, and that's why they want to engage in these conversations as well. Thank you, Mrs. Martin.
So, is there?
So, yeah, so there is a motion before you to either adopt as presented or adopt with additions, adjustments, or removals.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the legislative priorities as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made, properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you all very much.
Next up is board member comments. Is there any comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, I just have a couple of things, very short. First, I'd like to thank everyone who came tonight to watch and listen and be a part of our decisions, and also to congratulate and re-congratulate those who deservedly received awards this evening, and welcome those who have been appointed to our school. The second thing I'd like to talk about are the vapes. This is something that is a pervasive problem in our schools, specifically our high schools. And, you know, it's an issue that doesn't just face our school, it also faces the county in general, and I'm very optimistic that now especially, we'll be able to meet with the board of supervisors, as well as the Frederick County Sheriff's Department, to have discussions about what we can do as working together and fixing this issue, as opposed to just making it a school problem. Third, I want to reemphasize what Dr. Hummer mentioned to you all about the cut scores with the SOL. Basically, what that translates to is that currently, a 400 is passing. However, if this, or I should say, when these cut scores are adjusted, meaning they're passed by the General Assembly, these cut scores will increase to somewhere in the neighborhood of 430. Now, 30 points doesn't sound like a great deal, but it is a great deal when you're talking about how many questions it is, the type of learning it is, but most importantly, it's how the test itself is scored, what weight does each question get. There's a lot of ifs, ands, and buts that are still left unanswered by the General Assembly and by the state school board. The lack of information unfortunately has not made this any easier on any of the school districts in our state. This is a statewide issue, not just a Frederick County issue. It affects every single school student in our state. So, I hope that soon, we're able to get additional information and perhaps maybe make it a gradual increase versus a straight increase. Number four, I want to thank Mr. Surtivan and Mr. Norrie for the moments of silence. I think violence on anyone, regardless of whom they are, is absolutely horrendous. Uh, it doesn't matter if you agree with their politics, it doesn't matter if you like them or don't like them. No one ever deserves to be uh, in a situation like Charlie Kirk, the students in Minnesota, the representative from Minnesota, police officers, and the like. So, thank you for that moment of silence, and I hope that at some point, we can come together and not make this a Republican or Democratic issue, but make this a people issue. Um, and then finally, Bright Futures. I think uh, what the presentation showed us tonight is that it speaks for itself. The good that they're doing in our community, the food that they're providing, uh, the, the resources that they're providing. I encourage everyone to spend as much time um, as they can afford to support Bright Futures, whether it be with monetary donation, um, or your actual time. The time that you can spend there, I think probably means a lot more than the money, although of course, everything costs money. So, with that, um, I want to thank you all again, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, uh, so a few things, a few um, things in response to, to Mr. Norrie's comments about vapes, and this is not a criticism, Brian, this is truly not, but I want to share a couple of things you wouldn't know, unless you've been in schools and you're working in schools. I want to tell you, the worst nightmare of any staff member working in a school, especially an administrator, when you feel like you're responsible for a kid's safety, is um, when I showed up to a restroom, um, and had to go into a high school girl's restroom um, and find a girl curled up behind a toilet against a wall because she had overdosed, because what she thought was just a normal vape pen that was watermelon or tutti fruity, had fentanyl in it. I think what people don't understand is that this is a pervasive and not well enough talked about problem, especially at Millbrook High School. Kids are going to school as healthy kids, and they're coming home addicted. That's not acceptable. I also think that Mr. Strong deserves a lot of credit. He and I were talking after the, the last committee meeting, um, and he was sharing with me how much more stringent some of our consequences have gotten. And so I want to correct one error in what you said. We, we have reporting requirements between law enforcement and the schools, and there are a certain number of infractions, especially distribution, that are not only are, are against the law, but they go against our student code of conduct. We have to get more strict. What we find, time after time, is that if we're working in partnership with law enforcement, these behaviors do decrease, but if all we're doing is addressing addiction after the fact, that's like going on a diet after you've gotten fat on purpose, right? Like, that, that is not how change happens. If we want kids to not um, be using these devices, what they do outside of school is up to their parents and their guardians and our communities, but I almost just said a bad word, they sure as heck better not be doing it in the schools. Because it doesn't just affect the child who is vaping, and the child who is being exposed to a potential overdose, it affects the kids who can't even go to the bathroom, because they have to hold their breath to get through the, the vape fog. That's not okay. It doesn't just, it, this is not like it was when we were in school, and somebody would light up a cigarette because they were the rebel. They'd light up a cigarette in the bathroom, get caught, and everybody'd go home. This is completely different. These detectors, these halo and fly sense detectors are incredibly sophisticated pieces of equipment that can be calibrated correctly, I, I chase them for a full-time job. Um, and it's awful, and it's not a lot of fun, but it will drastically change behavior. It's hard at first, people don't like it at first, but when you put your foot down and say, "We're not going to allow drugs in our schools," hard stop. Um, that doesn't hurt anyone, so I just wanted to speak to that for a second. Um, the other piece of the, the cut scores, I um, I was very careful about my sports analogy last time, and so I'm gonna um, get daring again and say what this feels like, especially as somebody who supports these cut scores going up, which I do, because I want to see those standards go up, and I want to see us raise the bar. This is like a Lucy and Charlie Brown thing, right? We've told the kids the football's in one place, they're running toward that football full speed, and Lucy's about to move the ball. We cannot do this in the middle of a, of a school year. So I, I think that there's probably a lot to be said for those of us, especially on the educator side, who are in favor of raising standards, um, but, but maybe not um, doing it in the middle of the school year when the kids and teachers are already working toward their goal. P.S., the public can go out and make comment, if you go to the state's website. Um, that particular policy is still open for public comment, and I highly encourage you to take advantage of that, and that's it.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Anken.
Um, I do want to touch on the vapes and the uh, SOL scoring with the cut scores. Cut scores, my two cents on it. Yeah, I, I disagree with the way it's, it's being executed. Great Charlie Brown analogy. The goalpost is moved. That being said, though, a, a passing score is considered proficient. A D is also considered proficient, and you pass, right? Um, I do think we do need to up our game and have higher standards for our students. I know that, that it's going to come at a cost of, with the way we're going to have to educate our students, but we should always be striving for excellence and never settle for second best. Um, as far as the vapes, um, you hit the nail on the head, Mr. Norrie. It is technically illegal, it is illegal then. So, why would we allow drugs in the school? I don't think that advocating for drugs of any kind in the school is uh, is a very good idea or very socially minded, so um, I'm in full support of what Ms. Klein said. Anything we can do to get these vapes out of the school, whether it be technology that was presented, or any kind of policies or disciplinary actions that we can take, I'm all about it. Um, so that's about all I've got. Um, I do want to wish the uh, the new arrivals to our staff, um, uh, you know, a, a great time uh, while they're here. Um, hopefully, they stick around for, until they retire. And then, uh, also congratulate our students, not only, once again, our FFA students, just crushing it like they always do, and, and coming up, mopping up all the awards. And then, um, you know, we, we've, we had um, uh, staff get awards, we had a student uh, getting, get recognized tonight for being in the top one percent in the nation. I mean, it's, that's probably one percent of one percent of the nation.
That's a big deal.
Um, it's, it's amazing, it's a credit to all of our staff out there, his parents, for, you know, investing the time in them. So it, it is a um, it's a community effort, you know, between the staff and, and the parents out there. So I appreciate everything that our staff is doing out there to educate our children. It doesn't go unrecognized, and with that, I will relinquish my time.
I'd like to update, uh, Mr. Chairman, that James Wood won in three sets in volleyball tonight. And that's all. Congratulations to the teachers, and we look forward to having you.
Mr. Chair, just one quick thing that I wanted to, I wanted to provide some clarity to one of the legislative priorities, because Dr. Hummer and I went back and forth on a lot of these, making sure we had these hammered out and had the spirit of the board reflected in these priorities. Uh, the five-year probationary status for teachers, this is a whole new frontier for me as a board member, learning all of the credentialing and everything, all the hoops our teachers have to go through to get all the accreditations and everything they need to teach. There are several teachers in our district this year who are coming back from leave of absences or from time out of the, other time commitments outside of the, of the, uh, outside of the classroom, and they're coming back to the schools. It was my understanding, according to one teacher that I was speaking to, that she was giving, given a one-year ultimatum to get all of her continuing education done in a year, plus teach full-time. That indeed is not the case. So if you are one of those teachers that may fall in one of these, one of these somewhat probationary periods, please reach out to Central Office, reach out to us, reach out to Central Office first. I'm sure you'll get traction, I'm sure you'll get the supports you need, but we want to keep you, we want to retain you. We don't want you to go back into the workforce again when we have forty-nine positions open, I believe is what it is right now this week. So we still have forty-nine positions open, we started the year out with seventy-five positions open. Our H R team is doing an amazing job keeping those posi- getting folks hired for those positions, but there's still work to be done, so we want to retain those as many, as much as we can. So if you're a probationary teacher and you're trying to get through those credentialings, let us know. Let the Central Office know, you'll get the support that you need. So, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else? I would like to thank all those who have reached out to me in this past month, uh, by phone, in person, and given us their support, it means a lot, means more than you'll ever know. Again, I want to praise the volleyball team from James Wood, not because I think they're better than everybody else, which they are pretty darn good, but
But they kind of are.
They technically are.
Alright, well, I'm, 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 I've got all these schools that I'm responsible for, but they are a decent bunch of kids, all the kids that I'm meeting. And I've been in a lot of schools and, and been to a lot of functions. Some of the, the teachers are now starting to say that, uh, "We can't seem to get rid of you, because you're always here." So I, I'm, I'm seeing a lot of great things in our school system, I'm telling you. I even worked pre-K, which I don't know that I'll ever do again, but I did it. So, I'm seeing a lot of good things in the school system. Um, and thank you to the Shorando High School cheerleaders for allowing me to have some pom-poms and start cheering on the sideline. I looked like an idiot, but I did it anyway, so, thank you.
Can we get a picture of that?
I got it.
I, I do, he, he has the pictures. It is incriminating evidence.
I love it.
So. But we have a great school system, and yes, do we have some issues, do we have some problems from time to time? We certainly do, just like every other organization. But the people that I'm seeing on a daily basis and the, and the faculty I'm talking to, all the staff, do an outstanding job, and if you would hang around even this building here and see all the extracurricular stuff, looking around, how these people have been here all day, they're, they're still here, um, the things that the clerk does. I, it, it's an amazing amount of work that people don't see, and all the hard work that our librarians put in for us over the last few months. I'm telling you, we have a phenomenal staff. I know there are people out there saying that the staff is not being treated well, and that the staff are afraid to make comments because of retaliation. I guarantee you, I'm not seeing it, because they have no problems talking to me. And uh, I, I don't think that's an accurate statement, and I wish some people would stop saying that, but we have a phenomenal staff, and uh, we have a phenomenal school system, and a fantastic superintendent, and a fantastic board, and uh, my hat's off to all of them. And with that, the next announcement, or the announcement for uh, our next school board meeting is October twenty-one, twenty twenty-five. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bell.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? Oh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.